Call to order, town of North Branford, Town Council meeting, North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. We'll start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice.
You would provide the vote call, please.
Mayor.
Present.
Mayor.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Gromit.
Here.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Palladino.
Here.
Counselor Pritchard.
Here. Thank you. We're going to take a moment to have one of our esteemed members of the board here speak on some recent activity here in Connecticut, if you wouldn't mind. Counselor Pritchard?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and thank you to our town manager, Michael Downs, for allowing me to do this. On 10/12/22, the Bristol, Connecticut Police Department suffered a tremendous loss. On that day, the lives of Sergeant Dustin Demonte and Officer Alex Hamsey were taken in a most cowardly fashion. A third officer, Officer Alec Iarato, suffered gunshot wounds before he was able to terminate the threat. Everyday officers put on a badge. The badge is also referred to as a shield. It is worn over their hearts. The shield dates back to Roman times as a symbol of protection. Often, officers deal with the public at their lowest and most vulnerable times. It is during these times that they themselves become the shield. With large hearts and selfless bravery, they protect strangers while placing the public's safety above their own. When tragedies like the ones in Bristol happen, it affects not only the ones that wear the shield, the families of all law enforcement suffer as well. The realization of the dangers of the job sends shockwaves through the families, placing an immense amount of stress on everyone. In the past several years, there has been a movement to demonize the police for the actions of a small few. Today, I'm proud to announce that this is not North Branford. Our police, fire, and first responders will always be given the utmost respect, support, and appreciation. In closing, for all the law enforcement in attendance or watching at home, first, we are deeply sorry for the loss of your brothers. Second, thank you for protecting our communities each and every day while putting your lives on the line. Our prayers are with you. Now, I'd like to ask everybody if they're willing and able to stand so that we may take a moment to pause and honor Sergeant Dustin Demonte and Officer Hamsey with a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Pritchard. Thank you, Counselor Palladino. Appreciate all you do for our communities. All right, we're going to move on to item three, minutes of the previous meeting. I'll accept a motion for October 4th, 2022, WPCA and Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Deputy Mayor Zampano, second by Counselor Diamond. My mind slipped for a moment there. Any discussion?
Yes, may I just make a correction on page five, under the police commission report? It's, that last sentence is actually the CALEA, C-A-L-E-A accreditation project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that change.
Page five, where?
It's under police commission.
We'll get the updated copy as well. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just would want a note for your benefit. I did notice here that the minutes say Monday, October 4th, and of course, the date was Tuesday, October 4th. I'm going to amend that as well.
Thank you very much. We'll make that change as well. Okay, thank you. All right, under the advanced changes that were stipulated, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you. Moving on to the regular Town Council meeting. Item four, town manager report, an update for COVID-19 testing of vaccine. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council, you're in possession of the East Shore Health District report, and as of this afternoon, the State Department of Public Health is reporting 12 documented new cases of COVID in the past seven days in town, with a positivity rate of 11.5% for the prior seven days. This is a slight elevation compared to the two weeks prior, when it was at 9.8. However, if you look at the East Shore data from North Branford, you can see that we're still trending overall in a downward trajectory, having had 120 cases in August, 43 cases in September, and 25 cases in October as of now. According to CDC's Community Alert Framework, New Haven County remains at yellow or medium category at alert level, and there's an upcoming COVID-19 vaccine clinic here in North Branford facilitated by East Shore Health District at Zion Episcopal Church, 326 Notch Hill Road, on October 25th, and that's from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. The clinic is walk-in, and it's offering both Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, and that concludes my report on COVID.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on to item B, report Permanent Project Building Committee?
Sure. So with the Permanent Project Building Committee, there was no Permanent Project Building Committee meeting due to the federal holiday last Monday, but I attended both the PPBC Subcommittee meeting and the regular meeting last evening. For North Branford High School, as of September 30th, the contractor is approximately 44% complete. They have only expended 16% of the contingency, which is approximately $270,000. Contractor is still holding on a late December move-in. However, the supply chain issues, which we've discussed here before, can cause a delay, but all parties are working to try to maintain that schedule. For North Branford Intermediate School Roof, there is no update. For Stanley T. W. Roof, Stanley T. Williams Roof, that's, as I mentioned in your last meeting, the bid specifications for Stanley T. Williams are on your agenda for this evening. And for the North Branford Police Department EOC, as you know, we proceeded with a Phase One archaeological survey at the site in order to satisfy the ongoing environmental historic preservation requirements. We do have a preliminary report, and the final report is expected within a week. There was some interagency misdirection over who had jurisdiction over this process, FEMA or SHIPO. We moved forward with the understanding that SHIPO had jurisdiction when we initiated the survey, however, as a stormwater permit at the site turned out to not be required owing to the planned area of land being disturbed not exceeding five acres, FEMA will now have jurisdiction. So the processes are slightly different than SHIPO, and they and DEMIS are requesting that we not release the results of the preliminary report on the archaeological survey until such time as we have formally accepted the FEMA grant, and FEMA has requested the final report. So I will not disclose the information this evening at this council meeting, though the council, of course, has been confidentially briefed on the contents. To move this process along, your agenda tonight includes an authorization that will permit me to execute this grant acceptance. FEMA gives tribal authorities 30 days to respond if they have an interest in the location. Following that period around November 19th, the tribes will have another 30 days to approve their survey results or ask additional questions. Barring nothing unforeseen, this will take us to around December 19th. The final approval from FEMA would come a few weeks after that. So this final approval will come in the form of a Record of Environmental Consideration, or an REC, that will be issued for the project. The REC is the final step that will fully satisfy the federal archaeological requirements. Based on this information, we're probably looking at a start to this project soon after January 1st. I've communicated with Bill Grant, the Executive Vice President of Newfield Construction, which is our contractor for that project, to update him as we have been doing along, and he termed this as great news, and it is great news considering where we were on this just a month ago. Lastly, on this, DEMIS forwarded to me a memorandum concerning some new guidance on reimbursement for pre-award work, that it appears, and it appears in it that the Phase One survey may qualify for it, so we may be, following this process, be able to reimburse the town for the $8,000-plus for the archaeological survey that we did out of the FEMA grant. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on to, General, item five, oh, I'm sorry?
Need a question.
I didn't hear you. Apologies.
Mike, if I read all of those documents, I could be mistaken. Did I read five tribes instead of two?
Yeah.
It's funny that you say that, because every time we have a meeting, the number changes, but there are four.
I know Mashantucket, and I know Pequot.
Right.
Where are the other tribes from?
Delaware is another one.
In Connecticut?
Yeah, they're generally thought of as a New York tribe, but they do have, they're given part of the bite of the apple on this. Apparently, they had some influx in the area of Connecticut, so they have, they're given, the federal authorities want them to have.
So we have Mashantucket, Pequot, and Delaware, and another tribe?
They didn't dispel all the five. They actually went up by one on the last meeting. We weren't sure who that was. I have some speculation, but I'm not 100% sure.
Well, I'm kind of curious as to what five tribes could be involved in Connecticut. Should we find that out, so we can cover all our bases?
Yeah.
And in the future, we don't have a claim from a tribe that we never heard of from Ohio saying, oh.
Well, they only involve the four federally recognized tribes, because FEMA handles that contact, so. Delaware?
Mohegan, Mashantucket, Pequot.
Delaware, Mashantucket, Mohegan.
Golden Hill, Pecos. And there's something with that. I can't, I honestly don't remember.
I'll give it back to you on that.
Yeah, we'll have to give it back to you.
Yeah, there's four, you're right.
I just have a hard time understanding from 1600s, 1700s, when they had wagons and horses, how they came to Connecticut and didn't stay where they were stationed to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, they, I guess they have had some Delaware settlements in what's known as Connecticut now, so I guess that's why they do it.
Just curious.
Sure. Okay, all right. Any other questions before we, let Mike off the hook. He will come back with his report, his sociology report. Okay, item five, community events and presentations. Are there any community events, presentations, none? On to?
Can I make one comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Under community events. I just wanted to say, this past Sunday, I got to attend Stanley T. Williams, the express trunk-or-treat with my daughter. First time I attended, she had an absolute blast. I thought it was a great event, so I'd just like to thank anybody who was involved in handing out candy that day, organizing it, running it. It was just a really nice time, and I just feel I should be mentioned in that.
They did do a great job. They do. It's, more people should take advantage of what they're doing. It's really great for kids. All right, thank you. Okay, on to item six, citizen statements and positions and correspondence. Mr. Potter, how are you, sir?
Good, good.
Long time no see.
Ah, I'm vacationing.
Well, that's pretty good.
I'm retiring.
Why would you ever vacation from lovely North Branford, Connecticut?
Well, y'all's come back.
Oh, that's true.
Cliff Potter, Northford, Connecticut. I don't know how many of you ever come through those side doors, or which are actually the front doors, and ever took a right into that little room and spoke to that fantastic gentleman, Roger. Roger had a very deep love for this town. This town almost got nervous because Roger needed more hours, but if you give a part-time help more hours, you have to pay him benefits. Roger said, "Don't pay me benefits. Give me the hours. I've got my pension from John Deere." He was an executive very, very high up in John Deere country, whatever you want to say, and he thanked me, actually, for the last tractor pull. We had Gary Wall, CEO of Tilcon in Connecticut, on the poster in John Deere, so Roger appreciated that. But Roger and I have talked a lot in the past, and about, you know, when I was on the commission and stuff, we used to do stuff. Roger has left. Has anybody wondered why Roger has left? Well, Roger and I shared an email, and I'll read you what he wrote me. "Thank you, Cliff, for your kind words and the community work you do for North Branford. It has been a pleasure to work with you. Even featuring a John Deere tractor on Friday's tractor pull was not lost on me. Keep up your campaign for more transparency in government. In part, you are right. There are several situations today where individuals are abusing their power and impeding economic development." These are Roger's words, and I agree with him. We discussed this a lot. "I was a guest at a meeting yesterday," Roger's words, "which included a number of Connecticut-based developers, and the word is out among those doing business. North Branford is a hassle these days. As you may know, a new town planner is about to be appointed, and hopefully will be able to influence these issues you were addressing. Best wishes. Meanwhile, since announcing my plans to retire, I have been persuaded to unretire yet again by some high-level Connecticut leaders. We've lost a gem, and we've lost them because of internal struggles with commissions, personnel, that in and out of offices here, and we've lost businesses possibly. And when you do a job you love, and then all of a sudden, you want to leave it, we got to find out why. The town manager and I both agreed, we watched the Inland Wetlands meeting one night, and we both agreed the next day, they hadn't handled things properly that night. The lack of training is missing, the attitude is missing, the love for this town is missing, and it's got to stop. I've talked to you, and I know I'm sort of like that teacher on The Snoopy Show. All of a sudden, you're going to, you know, you start to hear wah, 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 wah. But when you hear from that man who was giving so much to this town, he was in with some pretty high-level people in businesses, and he was respected. He would send them here, and they were leave disgusted. We got to do this. We got to turn this around. We got to get this town back on track. We're known around the state. It's hard to deal with, and that's not what we want to be known for. And those are his words. You've heard it from me. I've caught various commissions, and I had proof about the May meeting a couple of years ago, inland wetlands and how it was handled, and it wasn't handled well. There's still stuff going on, and it just seems to keep on happening. And when the man that loved this town gets to the point he can't stand it here anymore, we got problems. Somehow, you're going to have to replace him, because we can't go back to the closed-in look. He reached out, opened up some very hard veins in business, and got him to work with us, and we didn't treat him right. So I'm upset. I will continue to be upset. I love this town. I'll do whatever I can. I do the tractor pulls because I love them, and also, what's all around the tractor pull track? Farms. Farms we can promote. If they see enough tractors out there, hey, maybe I'll stop at the fruit stand to buy a pumpkin or some corn stalks. You know, we just try to, what we have, we try to promote, but we have to do a better job. And when you hear it from Roger, and you hear it from me, I'm down here, but Roger was up here. So, and he's gone already. He's been already snatched up by people that realize how valuable he is. He was one hell of a guy to carry a conversation on with. He's, he knew his stuff. He's been all over the world, Africa, Germany, everywhere's, but he settled down here, and he liked it here, and then we somehow managed to mess that up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none. We thank you for your comment, Mr. Potter. On to resignations and appointments. Item A, appointment of Michael, is it, I don't know, Chersio, okay, I'll make sure I had that correct. Michael Chersio, to East Shoreline Health District Board of Directors, to replace Nicholas Palladino, term to expire 6/30/2024. I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Palladino.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you, Mr. Chersio, for taking that position. We do appreciate that. I understand that's a regional board?
Yes.
So that's, that's fantastic. Thank you for that. Okay, on to item eight, unfinished business discussion in action, update on the Auger House use agreement.
Thank you.
How are you, sir?
Mr. Mayor, we had circulated a version to the Board of Ed Council, as you know. They came back with certain changes, including a provision requiring the town to do background checks on all of its employees who had any contact with the premises and students there. That's really not something that, you know, we're in a position to do as the town, and it's rather costly for the town as well. We put in some alternative language prior to that, and giving the town additional rights. To jump to the conclusion, the board had not, through their council, had not agreed to our request to delete this background check provision they added to the agreement. The town manager met with the superintendent, and they had a discussion, and based upon the discussion, I revised the agreement in final form, taking out that requirement for background checks, including our right to be in there whenever the school is not in session to use the building, for instance, Poco or other festivals, when the students are not there, to allow the town back in to use it again. And I sent that to council with the instructions that, per discussions between Mr. Downs and the superintendent, the board is to sign it, and that will be the final agreement, and stop going back and forth on this. And I've not gotten it back from them yet.
Okay, I was going to ask a question. I was going to ask. Thank you.
It's been understanding. We can't give in on those terms. It's, they've, you know, this is a simple agreement. It should remain that way.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So that being said, we will remain unfinished business until we get the signed agreement back, and we can execute as such.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on to item nine, new business discussion in action. Item A, resolution for Michael Downs to sign the emergency management grant application. Resolve that the town of North Branford may enter into and deliver to the state Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary and appropriate, and further resolve that Michael Downs, as town manager of the town of North Branford, is authorized and instructed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of North Branford, and to do and perform all acts of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
And I would just note, as part of the resolution, what the grant is for, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed.
I would just note, for purposes of the resolution, what this grant is specifically for.
Absolutely. This is actually a standing, usually this is renewed annually, so that the town manager may enter into any grant arrangement with, with both DEMIS and FEMA. So that's what this is.
That should be part of it, so it's clear. It's not one specific grant, but it's.
Right, exactly.
All right, so how would you like to report that, and we can?
I think the resolution is for Mr. Downs to sign emergency management grant applications as may be presented to him for DEMIS or FEMA.
Probably do it.
Okay, so, under the guise of the improvement to the language by our town attorney, I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Diamond, second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. All action things which he deems to be necessary. It's kind of just too unilateral for just one person to deem what is necessary for the town of 12,000 people. Shouldn't it be that whatever he deems should be brought back to the town council before it is determined whether or not we move forward?
We'll test our town attorney with typical of such a statement.
I think it is. It's talking about necessary or appropriate, appropriate to carry out the terms of the documents, and then it has including by way of example, delivering agreements, and that would include signing any other documents or providing information that would be required in connection with obtaining those grants. Sometimes, grants require a number of additional documents or actions before you get them, so this would let him provide what needs to be provided.
So this is not atypical of stipulation to have for a town manager, and this was something that we had prior with our past town managers as well?
I believe you do this annually.
Yes, it was an annual.
I just, they were constantly saying, but it's not written that those are the conditions. It's his interpretation of what the conditions are, and it's not really specific.
Attorney Leclerc?
Yes, sir.
I believe there's also a provision in our charter that if, when applying for a grant, if there is any exposure to the town, it has to be voted on prior to applying for the grant, and that still stands, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
So Vince, if there was any exposure to the town when applying to a grant, it would have to be brought before us first. We would have to vote on it and be accepting of that should we get the grant, so technically, it would come before us anyhow. Otherwise, if there was no exposure to the town, and it was just an application for a grant, then no harm, no foul. He can apply for the grant, and it is what it is.
Well, thank you, Rob. It says all documents, not just what could be applied to the town charter. It says all documents. To me, all documents are any documents that are being submitted, for whatever reason, not just documents that could be applied or protected by the town charter. So there's a difference when you may have an inclusion of all documents and not certain specific documents that would need to be brought before the town council.
How could you possibly list all the documents that potentially could be asked for in any grant we ever apply for? It would make it very difficult. Again, this is typical language. It's not functional.
I mean, if you have, and you have to check, you know, if it's a grant for 100% funding, for instance, additional police speed enforcement, that's no cost to the town. It would be additional money to the police to have additional officers out, for instance. That's one thing. If there was a grant that required a 50-50 match by the town, that's different. That would come back under the charter. A few folks to say, well, before we take the $50,000 from DEMIS, if it's going to cost us 50, do we want to invest that ourselves to get 50-50 back? So that's your protection, so you're not obligating the town for something that, you know, you don't believe Mr. Downs should.
Again, we only meet every two weeks, so we want to make sure that we're not leaving things to every two weeks. If something comes in right after this meeting, that's why we hired a town manager in this form of government. But I can appreciate your sentiment, and you certainly can invoke your, however you feel on this. So that said, are there any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Abstained. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, all right, on to item B, review and approval of bid specification for bid 2301, well, I can't speak tonight, 230.
23100.
Wow, 23100, roof replacement of the Stanley T. Williams Community Center. Thank you. Couldn't get that out.
I must say, this is comprehensive.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Diamond.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you. On to item C, financial report as of September 30th, 2022. Anthony, how are you tonight?
Excellent, sir. How are you?
Well, thank you, sir.
The financial report at the end of September, I'm sorry, remains unremarkable. Tax collections still continue to exceed prior year, 54.8% compared to 53.7%. Overall revenue is lagging a little bit, but nothing to be concerned about. On the expense side of the House, the item that sticks out is that very top line, the mayor and council department, 111% of budget already. And you recall, that was a function of our auditor. We had budgeted 40, couldn't get an auditor, then the one came in at 80. So until we go out through a year after April, we can move money between departments. We will rectify that as the time comes around, and go from there on. On the public works, I believe you have the version that does bring down subtitles on those public works lines. You'll see snow, autumn, things like that, and that's, again, part of the new uniform chart of accounts that we are complying with, with the state of Connecticut. Any questions, anybody has? I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Last month, Bill, I'm trying to pronounce his name, he had asked about having some kind of a right for senior citizens on their property taxes who are having a tough time due to the increase in the economy and everything else. Have you thought about that or had an opinion on that, or?
Well, the town currently has an elderly tax deferral program that's in our code of ordinances already. It doesn't provide a ton of relief, quite honestly, but it does provide some relief. It's income-based, and folks have to apply for it. There are state programs as well that residents can apply for if they meet the income criteria on those two deals. So there are options that the town has for the residents, both a local option as well as a state program that they can apply for. A valuable resource might be Luisa Breen up in the social services office. She has access to many documents, as well as Dave Ambrose, our assessor. A lot of those programs run through the assessor's office, so anybody that's interested could contact the assessor, and they'd be able to give them the application for both the local option as well as the state program and the parameters that pertain to it.
So how would senior citizens in North Branford and Northford know who to contact, how to contact, and whether or not if they get state assistance, is it repayable, or, I mean, how do they find out? Because I know Bill is very concerned about maybe the senior citizens.
Yep, that's an excellent point. I believe Luisa at the senior center offers programs when that time, there's a certain time of the year window when people have to apply for those programs. I believe that she offers educational programs to the seniors that are at the senior center, but again, that doesn't, that doesn't address the entire town's population, which is a valid point. Perhaps, she puts also press releases in like the Totoka Times and the Advisor, and things like that. Short of that, I'm not sure what else we could do. Maybe have some in-person sessions, maybe at night or something like that to. Maybe have some in-person sessions, maybe at night or something like that to...
Was there any way the town, you as the financial director, get something to the Totoka Times?
Certainly.
So that, an article, so that senior citizens who are struggling?
Sure.
I'd rather have somebody, they got to buy medicine or food or pay their taxes.
Right.
Medicine and food are necessary to taxes. We could always wait till later on.
Sure, sure.
Is there any way that you could get something?
Yeah, I believe they do put press releases in the local papers, but I'll confirm that with both Louisa and Dave, and if not, we can, you know, juice them up a little bit, make them more frequently, and get the word out there to educate the senior citizens. That's a valid point.
I appreciate that, really.
No problem.
And please make note in the minutes that the gentleman, that Counselor Mace is speaking of, is Bill Savistino. His note was read during our previous meeting. Thank you.
I don't remember.
That's fine.
I couldn't pronounce his last name.
Anthony, is there any way that you could just put something on our webpage, too? Is that, I know...
I believe the application process is on the assessor's page on our website, but I'll, again, I'll confirm that with Dave tomorrow.
That's a great point.
And, again, and the sessions that Louisa holds at the senior center, only a limited number of folks actually go there, so there's obviously a larger population of seniors that are not getting the information, and that's a valid point. We can make more of an effort to get the word out there.
Well, I've been to the senior center at Stanley T. There's not a lot of seniors that go there.
Right.
They get maybe ten, twelve sometimes. There's not a lot that go there. But there are a lot of senior citizens in town.
Certainly.
That, you know, maybe we should try and help them out if we can.
We could also publicly put something here in the tax assessor's office with...
I believe there is, there is notifications there as well.
Application to apply. Maybe something for them to locate.
We could certainly spice up the effort a little bit.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Anthony, health and human relations, it's already over a hundred percent. Is that just because it was uncovered more than...
Yeah, that's a function of the way things are coding now under the new Chart of Accounts. It's going to take a couple of years for us to get in line with the way things are broken up historically versus how they're breaking up now under the new Chart of Accounts. That's, that's the explanation for that one. I can research it and get the exact number. Again, the largest one being the Mayor and Council one as a function of the audit, but aside from that, there's nobody else.
I understand that one, but I wasn't sure about.
Yeah, no, I'll get the exact information for you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions before I move on? Seeing none, moving on to item D, appropriation transfer.
The sole appropriation transfer you have before you is relating to the Communications Department. There was an issue that the headsets, that the dispatchers use, the base that the headsets communicate with had malfunctioned, and it resulted in some very bad communications between the dispatchers and police and fire units. That has been rectified as a function of the new council and some equipment that was purchased. So this is just a transfer. It was an unbudgeted item, just a transfer to cover that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to transfer from account one-zero-zero-zero-four-two-two-one-five-five-nine-zero-nine-zero, four hundred dollars, to account one-zero-zero-zero-four-two-two-one-five-seven-three-nine-zero.
Motion by Counselor Mace?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Goode. Excuse me. Seconded by Counselor Goode. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you very much.